A voice about whether Iowa is a destination for abortion, even up to birth. It is the design of democracy.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Would you go ahead and please introduce yourself again? We'll get to time and race. Go ahead.
My name is Dr. Rebecca Shaw. I am here representing myself and the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, my professional organization. I have been providing obstetrical and gynecologic care to women in Iowa for over thirty-five years. My views on reproductive choice and abortion have been shaped by taking care of thousands of women in our state with many needs and many different situations. I am a member of the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, which is a national organization that maintains the highest standards of clinical practice for physicians taking care of our Iowa women. Our members have dedicated their careers and lives to secure healthy futures for our patients and their families by providing high-quality, evidence-based care. ACOG Iowa supports the availability of safe, high-quality reproductive health services for all women and is committed to protecting safe, legal access to abortion as a necessary component of women's health care. In my years taking care of women in this state, I have seen many patients, such as those with a contraceptive failure, who were desperate for a way to terminate an unintended pregnancy. I have cared for women and their families when a fetal abnormality was discovered, resulting in a very difficult decision to terminate the pregnancy. My professional organization has long opposed unnecessary, unjustified government restrictions on abortion and worked to prevent political interference into medical decision-making that is inappropriate, ill-advised, and dangerous. The World Health Organization has solid data showing that more women die when abortion care is restricted. Like all patients, women obtaining abortions are entitled to privacy, dignity, respect, and support from their doctor, free from political overreach. Iowa is the state with the fewest obstetricians per capita, so we already have a major problem with access to obstetrical care. Medical students want to train where the full range of reproductive care is offered and taught, and trained obstetricians and gynecologists want to live and work in a state that supports the full range of reproductive health services. House Joint Resolution 2004 will have a chilling effect on recruiting doctors to train and to practice in our state. This resolution places ill-advised and dangerous restrictions on women's reproductive choices, and I urge you to oppose House Joint Resolution 2004. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please state your name, and then you may get started.
My name is Lisa M. Grozick. I live and work in Des Moines, and I would like to share my personal experience with abortion, and based upon that experience and my personal and moral convictions, encourage and support the passage of House Joint Resolution 2004, the Protect Life Amendment. I earned my nursing degree in 1979, and my first position was in a women's clinic called Population Dynamics. At one point, I was asked to assist the physician with later-term abortions. It was my job, after the abortion, to identify in the sink the crushed skulls, the faces, the spinal cords, the arms and legs of the baby, and document in the medical file that, quote, "the abortion was complete." The women primarily came to the clinic for abortions, but many came seeking answers. No other alternatives were offered or counseled upon. The women were rushed in and rushed out, no opportunity to consider the taking of life they were about to agree to. It was a murder mill, a profit-seeking enterprise, often setting quotas for how many abortions were to be performed in a day or week, which often averaged thirty-five or more a day. Their agenda was to profit financially from the murder of innocent babies. Following one specific abortion involving an abnormal uterus that was not diagnosed by the doctor, a woman nearly died in my arms due to hemorrhaging. She subsequently had a hysterectomy at twenty-three years old. Following that incident, the entire staff walked out of the clinic, including me, and did not return. The abortionist lies and tells women that they can quote "have the life they want," but walking into a clinic for an abortionist, quote, "empowering." These are lies, period. What about the life that could have been for this child? What is empowering about murder? I've witnessed the emotional, physical, and spiritual bankruptcy many women feel after an abortion, and there is indeed a ripple effect from the act of abortion that leaves heartbreak, guilt, and grief in the lives that were touched. That is why, since leaving the abortion industry, I've dedicated my life to sharing with others the absolute love, mercy, grace, healing, and forgiveness of our Lord Jesus Christ. There were 2,849 abortions performed in Iowa in 2018. I believe in the absolute sanctity of life, and no one has the right to terminate it. I believe in the Iowa Supreme Court should have taken a stand to protect life, and there are no evolving standards. We should pass HJR 2004, correct the court, and ask the legislature to protect life from the moment of conception. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name, and then you may get started. If you represent an organization, let us know. Thank you.
My name is Claire Harney. I am an OB-GYN doctor and a member of ACOG. I've worked in a federally qualified safety net clinic in Davenport, Iowa, for the past four years, and I care for hundreds of low-income, high-risk pregnant women in our town and from the surrounding communities up to an hour-a-week. I'm a mom too, and I'm not home a lot. My kids are young, and they cry, and I leave, and I tell them that my job is to keep all the mommies safe so that they can come home to their babies. At the end of the day, I'm not a good cook, but I'm really good at making sure my mommies make it home to their kids. So I know that pregnancy imposes significant risks on a mother's health and life that are difficult for me to predict. We often talk about moms who have pre-existing conditions like obesity and hypertension, but even healthy moms can have unexpected complications that mean that she ends up losing her job and that she can't care for the people who depend on her. For vulnerable families, this can be devastating. I have many moms who have their water break preterm or get preeclampsia, and I have to recommend that they stay at the hospital away from their kids at home. They have to choose between having someone they don't trust watch their kids, putting them in foster care, or just going home and risking having a stillbirth or a seizure in front of them. I told one mom last winter in my ER that she had to stay, and she had this look of anguish on her face. She said that she had to make a call to see about her kids, and she stayed. In the middle of the night, we got a call from the police that Dad had left her six-year-old daughter and three younger siblings home alone to go to get high. After hours, her six-year-old got scared. It was winter, and they had no phone, so she got all of their coats and shoes on and marched them to the bus station. And she told them at the bus station that her mommy had a baby in her tummy and went to the hospital, and she had to get a bus there. She made it to the hospital with her siblings, and I told her how brave she was and that her mom raised her right. The fact was, she had a really good mom who was put in an impossible situation. We know that most women who have abortions in the U.S. are already moms. I meet dozens of women who fight to survive like this, who love their children so fiercely and have to make choices when they become pregnant about whether to risk leaving them without a mother. We know that making abortion illegal or difficult to get doesn't decrease the number of abortions. It doesn't. It doesn't save any unborn children. It just increases the number of unsafe abortions and maternal mortality, especially in our most vulnerable families and communities. Mothers who believe abortion is necessary to protect their families are desperate and determined and brave, and they deserve a place to go that's safe. Please oppose this bill and help me and other Iowa OB-GYNs keep our moms safe.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Please state your name if you belong to an organization, and then you may begin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Representatives. My name is Renee Amen. I'm a grateful Iowan, living just a mile from the Capitol here. Thank you for listening to my perspective. First, I want you to know that I'm pro-women. I'm a true feminist. As a woman in the construction field, I have many motivations to stand for women's rights and to pave the way for my ten nieces, two of whom had birthdays yesterday, my two younger sisters, and many little friends at my church downtown here. I want them and all women to be outstanding in whatever path they choose. I want them to be equally paid. I want them to have equal opportunity to hold positions of leadership, to have equal access to education. Second, I'm pro-democracy. I'm proud to live in the first state to caucus for president. Just last night, I was at a Des Moines City Council meeting where many testified in the same way that I am now. These democratic rights are a privilege I and other Iowans take seriously, as everyone here in this room does. Not only am I pro-women and pro-democracy, but I am pro-life. Mother Teresa said, quote, "Abortion is profoundly anti-women. Three-quarters of its victims are women, half of the babies and all of the mothers," unquote. In fact, well over half of babies aborted around the world are girls. How is this pro-women, I ask myself? Also, I found out last year that sixty-four percent of women who've had an abortion, not all, but over half, who've had an abortion say that they felt pressured by others to abort. To me, that doesn't sound like a choice, and this is the pressure that the original seventy-two-hour waiting period bill, that the Planned Parenthood v. Reynolds case in eighteen, was trying to address. However, I recognize I am a representative of the people of Iowa, and that we live in a democratically elected constitutional republic, and it's a constitutional republic that protects all of us and all of our rights. Whether you're pro-life or pro-choice, the establishment of our rights as Iowans, as Americans, amending the Constitution is legally supposed to be approved by we, the people. That's the law, not five unelected judges. That's why the Pro-Life Amendment needs to be passed. This is not a Republican versus Democrat issue, and as a woman and a feminist, I absolutely reject the idea that this is a man versus woman issue. What's at stake today in Iowa is rule by we, the people, or rule by unelected judges. It's an issue, first of all, of democracy versus oligarchical dictatorship, by definition. Let's call it what it is, and let's focus there, please. Please vote, Representatives, for we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name, who you represent, and then get started, please.
Hi. My name is Frida Backless. I was born and raised in Des Moines, and I've lived here most of my life. First, I want to thank you all for holding this public hearing because a constitutional amendment that interferes with personal health care deserves public input. One in four women have abortions, and I am one of them. I became pregnant when I was fifteen years old after experiencing a sexual assault. I tried to reach out for help. I researched my options, and I called a number that I found online. I now know that number belonged to an anti-choice organization. They blamed me for what had happened to me. They made me feel ashamed and isolated, and they led me to believe I could not access a safe and legal abortion. Still, I knew I could not carry the pregnancy to term, so I had an abortion without telling anyone. It was a horrible experience to go through alone, and I would never wish it on another person. I hope that your daughters, your granddaughters, or someone you love never has to go through the isolation that I went through. Yet I know that countless other Iowans have. We know that taking away access to safe, legal abortion does not stop abortions from happening. This constitutional amendment only ensures that young women in our state will resort to extreme and dangerous measures. It will not prevent abortions. It will put Iowans in danger. Working to reduce the stigma around abortion, providing comprehensive reproductive health education, and guaranteeing access to health care are the ways that we help pregnant people, and that's what I do. I support youth in Des Moines by providing reproductive health education, and I support people through pregnancy as a doula. Meanwhile, you've introduced HJR 2004. This bill is rooted in the idea that abortion is a shameful procedure, and we don't help people by shaming them. I will not let this legislation shame me because I have worked hard to overcome the shame that I felt when I was fifteen years old, and I am proud of the strength that I found to make the right decision for myself. My abortion was mentally necessary. Because I know I would not have survived that pregnancy, I would have rather died. Right now, I am ashamed. I am ashamed to be an Iowan. I'm ashamed that since my abortion eight years ago, things have only gotten worse, that our government does not recognize our right to bodily autonomy. I'm ashamed that I have to be here today trying to convince you not to strip away that right. Please do not put more Iowans in danger. Please do not allow this constitutional amendment to pass. Vote no on HJR 2004.
Thank you. Next up, please state your name if you represent an organization. Go ahead, yes, sir.
My name is Brittany Reska. In 1965, my family was saved. It was before Roe v. Wade, it was before Planned Parenthood v. Reynolds. It was before the elimination of life was so accessible. In 1965, my biological grandmother was a victim of rape. She became pregnant as a young teenager and bravely carried my mother and selflessly gave her up for adoption. From my mother came three children and four grandchildren. I think about how different our life might have been had my mother been conceived eight short years later, and by life, I mean I wouldn't have existed. I wouldn't be sitting here in front of you today. My mother became pregnant with me at sixteen years old. Her adoptive mother and stepfather tried to force my mom to abort me. My mother had her run away from her home to the safety of her adoptive father. I think about the pressure my mom felt to get rid of me and how she was told I would ruin her life. I think about what if I was destroyed in her womb? I think about how my mother was an overcomer and what a wonderful life I had with her. For the past seventeen years, I have specialized in neonatal intensive care nursing. I've spent my entire adult life learning to care for these babies. I worked hard to learn how to perform lifesaving interventions. I have become skilled at inserting the smallest IVs in breathing tubes. I've learned to restart beating hearts again, and I have helped little lungs to start breathing. My job is full of high expectations and pressure because of how valuable these babies are. Anicu is where life literally fits in your hands. It's a place of miracles and beating the odds every day because these little ones have the strongest will to live. Babies as young as twenty-two to twenty-three weeks have a reasonable chance of survival. They are small and fragile. They love to be warm and snug. They know their mother's scent and are comforted by it. They know their parent's voice and respond to it differently than others. They can pull away from pain and display stress cues. They can cry. They can taste milk and respond to it. They love being skin to skin on their parent's chest. They can snuggle up and fall asleep in their parents' hands. Their personalities are already showing, and they stay with them as they grow. I've seen babies born younger. These babies are too young for modern medicine to say this does not stop them from fighting to live. It doesn't stop little mouths from trying to cry, little arms from waving, little legs from kicking, and little hearts from beating as long as they can. I have helped hold these babies in their final moments. I have handed them to their mothers for their last breath. Watching someone so small and so innocent leaving this world is sacred and heart-wrenching, and I can't imagine anyone ever intentionally hurting them. They feel everything more intensely than we do because they are premature. I know these babies well. Every baby deserves not only life but to be protected against violent and hateful acts to end their life. I've never questioned their humanity, but I do question ours.
Thank you very much. Next up, please state your name, and if you represent an organization, go ahead and get started.
Hello, my name is Amanda Acton. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak once again in opposition to the proposed constitutional amendment, HJR 2004, removing the fundamental right to abortion in Iowa. I have spoken to this body before about my experience with abortion, but in case you weren't there or have you forgotten, I'd like to remind you what I said. I'll remind you that I had to have an abortion at twenty-three weeks because unlike the children you just heard about, my daughter didn't have lungs, and it was the only choice I could make to save her an agonizing brief death. I'll remind you that although this was the hardest thing I've ever gone through and I hope I'll ever have to go through, my decision was never hard because I knew that compassion was the only thing I could give her. I'll remind you that in making this decision, I trusted my personal faith in my family and my doctor, but never once did I call up my representative or my neighbors and ask them what they thought I should do. But most importantly, I want to remind you that having my abortion was the compassionate thing to do. It was the right thing to do for me, and what made it possible was a constitutionally guaranteed right to make the decision. Access to abortion when I needed it likely saved my life, and it saved my future family. Elected officials have already taken away that right for people in my situation by restricting without exception abortion after twenty-three weeks, and I just want you to know that, in my opinion, this is state-sanctioned torture and violence and a gross imposition of one set of deeply held beliefs on another person. Elected officials also attempted to put the lives and health of even more people like me at risk when it passed the six-week abortion ban, despite objections from medical professionals, faith leaders, and Iowans. It was struck down because the Iowa Constitution protects our right to make medical decisions without interference. I see what you're doing. You didn't get your way the first time, so you're trying to, once again, usurp the will of the people to make an end run at our rights. What I don't understand is why. I don't understand why you're ignoring the will of the people and why you are legislating to a few fringe members of your party and why you don't have the courage to stand up to these bullies.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Please state your name if you represent an organization, and you can begin.
Good evening. My name is Josh Degro, and I'm a pastor at Real Life Church in Aitney. I want to thank you for a few minutes of your time tonight. Proverbs chapter thirty-one, verses eight and nine, says, "Open your mouth for the mute, for the rights of all who are destitute. Open your mouth; judge righteously; defend the rights of the poor and the needy." I'm here today to urge you with all seriousness to do the right thing, to judge righteously. And I just want to take a few moments to press you on two things with great urgency. First, abortion is a great and gross injustice. And second, you are called God's servants and called to promote justice. First, abortion is a gross injustice, and it's foisted upon the most helpless of all human beings. The language of this amendment makes it clear that it is to defend the dignity of all human life, and who could argue with that? But it is all human life, not most, but all, including the preborn human life. There is no group of people among us more destitute than the preborn. They are mute, and they need us to speak for them. They are weak, and they need us to be strong for them. They are defenseless, and they need to be offended by us. To be clear, abortion is the intentional and gruesome dismemberment and killing of an innocent human being who is made in the image of God. That's what it is. It's a boy or a girl. It's a son or a daughter. Science affirms this. Technological advances vividly show us this, like an ultrasound, and the conscience of every human being attests to this. You and I know this. Therefore, to deny it is to simply suppress the truth that is before us and that we know. We have no excuse, which leads to my second point. You, as elected representatives, are God's servants and called to promote justice in the state of Iowa, just laws which commend good behavior and punish evil behavior. The Book of Romans, chapter thirteen, says that governing authorities act as God's servants. Now, maybe you guys have never thought of that before, never thought of yourselves as that before, but God views you in that way. You may think that you are accountable merely to your constituents in your districts and to your donors, but that's not true. The judge of all the earth, the judge of all human history, is the God who made you, and He's watching. You will stand before Him and give an account of what you've done here, and make no mistake, He is a God of impeccable justice. Righteousness and justice are the foundation of His throne, His eternal throne. So I urge you to judge righteously, do what's right, protect the life of the most needy and helpless among us. Pass this amendment and see it all the way through until it's ratified and added to the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, please state your name, what organization you represent, and you may begin.
My name is Debbie Griffin, and I am a pastor of Downtown Disciples here in Des Moines, Iowa. Before I share with you my prepared remarks, I would just like to respond to the individual that just spoke because I also am a Christian and I'm also a pastor, and I would just like to state that I disagree with just about everything that he said. And my point in saying that is that there is just much disagreement, not only among citizens of Iowa, but among Christians themselves, about the Scriptures and about judging and if we're called to judge others or if we're called to love our neighbors and respect their ability to make good decisions for themselves. And not only that, but of course, we have freedom of religion in this state and in this nation, so one religious group of people does not get to decide the moral standard for the rest of the state or the rest of the country. I come to you tonight as a voting citizen, as a woman, as a mother and a grandmother, a Christian and an ordained minister in the Christian Church disciples of Christ. As a pastor here in Des Moines, I am invited to walk with people in the most joyful and also in some of the most painful times of their lives. The key word there is that I am invited into their lives because I have a relationship with them, a relationship of trust. Sometimes, though, I'm a Christian, and I'm a Christian, and I'm a Christian, and I'm Sometimes those invitations come when people are making life-changing decisions concerning their bodies, concerning parenthood, and pregnancy. In everyone who's making these life-changing decisions concerning their bodies and their parenthood and their pregnancy, they come into these decisions with great thought, with unique situations. And I think that's the most important thing I'd like to share with you, that my experience has been every person's situation is unique. And for us to decide for others a blanket decision based on what we might feel or how we might think that we would make a decision, we just really don't know unless we've been in that decision. And so what I'd like to say is that the way that I love my neighbor is by respecting their freedom.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Next up, please state your name, if you represent an organization, and you may begin.
Good evening. My name is Kim Lobby. I am the Director of Life Ministries for Lutheran Family Service, and I urge you to support the Protect Life Amendment. The Protect Life Amendment proposes an amendment to Iowa's Constitution clarifying that the document does not secure or protect a right to abortion, nor does it require taxpayer funding for abortion. This amendment became necessary when a handful of unelected members of Iowa's Supreme Court overstepped their constitutionally outlandish mandate and chose, in essence, to create law rather than to interpret it. In their five-to-two ruling on Iowa's 72-hour waiting period for abortion, the court found a fundamental right to abortion where one did not exist. This inappropriate ruling by judicial activists intentionally tied legislators' hands, rendering it virtually impossible in the absence of a constitutional amendment to legislatively impose any reasonable restriction on abortion. Creating law, of course, is not a function of the judiciary, and that is by design. This judicial overstep is unacceptable regardless of the content and must not be permitted to stand. I urge you today to reclaim your role as elected lawmakers. Further, I urge you to correct the High Court's disenfranchisement of Iowa's citizens by ensuring they have the opportunity to exercise their right to vote on ratifying any change to the Constitution that governs us. The High Court's ruling stripped citizens of their right to representation via their elected legislators and usurped the process by which Iowa's Constitution may be amended. In doing so, they swung the gates wide open for late-term abortions. Though the bulk of both pro-choice and pro-life advocates oppose it, late-term abortions for any reason, even up to the point where the mother is literally in the midst of delivering her child, could not be outlawed in Iowa at this point without a constitutional amendment. Without the Protect Life Amendment, Iowa's current ban on abortion's 20-weeks post-fertilization is at imminent risk of giving way. Atrocities such as denying resuscitation to a newborn infant born alive after a botched abortion could be the future here in Iowa. As we have seen in Virginia, New York, and elsewhere, the collective outcry against late-term abortion and infanticide is growing exponentially as the populace comes to understand how heinous these procedures are. To those here supporting the Protect Life Amendment, I thank you on behalf of Iowans and especially our exquisitely vulnerable preborn children. Thank you. We hope that you stay the course.
Thank you. Next up, please state what organization you represent, and make sure your mic is on, and you may begin.
I'm Connie Ryan, Executive Director of Interfaith Alliance of Iowa and Action Fund. We represent people of faith and no faith across Iowa who believe in a woman's right to make her own healthcare decisions without the interference of the government. I want to speak directly to Republican lawmakers. You are attacking the fundamental right of Iowa women to make our own healthcare decisions. You are ignoring history, and you are placing women in danger. Safe and legal abortion has been available nationwide for 50 years. I came into this world when safe and legal was not the norm for women seeking an abortion. It was a dangerous time for women. Many women died or were harmed because abortion was not legal or safe in most states. Women who were poor suffered the most. I came of age after safe and legal became the law of the land and was available should I have needed to consider that healthcare decision. My daughter's generation has only ever known the battle to control their own bodies and to fight for their fundamental right to make their own healthcare decision regarding abortion. They have only ever been part of a world when conservative lawmakers and religious extremists have pushed the political agenda to insert themselves into a woman's private healthcare decision and to have access to a safe, legal abortion. If this amendment becomes part of our state's Constitution, you will return us to the day where it will be commonplace for women to die or for their bodies to be harmed. The only arguments to take away a constitutionally guaranteed right for a woman to control her body are from a narrow interpretation of religion. You have every right to hold your religious belief. You just cannot use your religious belief to infringe on the fundamental freedoms and rights of other people. We have agreed as a nation from the very beginnings of this country and of this state that the government should not and cannot force religion upon its people. That is precisely what HJR 2004 does. It inserts one religious belief into the lives of all the people, using the Constitution as its instrument to do harm. The Constitution should never be used to do harm. Women have the freedom and constitutional right to make the best healthcare decisions for themselves, including the right to a safe, legal abortion. When needed, we make that decision with our doctor, often with our family and friends, sometimes in relationship with God, but never with our legislators. You don't need to agree with safe, legal abortion. You just need to believe in the Constitution and reject this legislation. Thank you.
Next up, please state your name, what organization you are with, make sure your mic is on, and you may begin.
Hi, I'm Maggie Dewitty, and I'm the Executive Director of Iowans for Life, and I'm the spokesman for the Coalition of Pro-Life Leaders. You're going to hear a lot of testimony this evening about abortion, and the organizations that I speak for are very clear on where we stand on the sanctity of human life. That little girl in her mother's womb, she's a baby, and she deserves to be protected. But this amendment is broader than the abortion debate, and the legislators and the public need to understand what this amendment is about. First, this amendment does not ban any abortion. It does not change any existing abortion law. And if it does anything to bring us back is to 2018, when five unelected judges of the Iowa Supreme Court tried to do an end run around the people of Iowa by creating a fundamental right to abortion. They tried to end the abortion debate by arbitrary judicial decree, adding a supposed right to our Constitution without a vote of we the people. This time, unelected judges rewrote the Constitution on abortion. But if we cede them this power, what's to stop them from rewriting our speech rights, our Second Amendment rights, or any other right they decide to add or subtract? If we the people, regardless of where you stand on abortion, don't defend our right to amend the Constitution ourselves, and we allow five unelected judges to rule over us and our Constitution, why are we even here in this building tonight? Contrary to what you may hear in testimony today, the judges of the Supreme Court are not the supreme rulers in the state of Iowa. Even our judges serve a Constitution, and one that cannot be rewritten only by we the people. And we the people did not write a fundamental right to abortion, and we do not want to pay for abortions. And that is, after all, what this Protect Life Amendment actually says. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please state your name, what organization you represent, and you may begin.
My name is David Sikulka, and I have been a church pastor for nearly 35 years and currently serve a church at Urbandale, Urbandale United Church of Christ. I do not speak for my congregation tonight because that is not our way, but I speak for those in my congregation who faithfully intend to affirm a woman's right to choose. My congregation has not taken a position on abortion, but we have made the decision that we will do what we can to reduce the number of unwanted pregnancies in our community. We provide comprehensive sex education for our youth and adults that is fact-based and affirming all orientations and gender identities. By providing information about how to prevent pregnancies, we keep our kids and adults from having to make the difficult choice that is the subject of this legislation. HJR 2004 is not going to be effective in reducing the number of abortions. It is based on the false assumption that making something illegal will prevent people from doing it. It will be, I imagine, not as effective as lowering the speed limit on Interstate 8. But my opposition to this bill goes deeper than that. In my religious tradition, there are multiple histories of people who faced persecution, imprisonment, torture, and death for their religious beliefs. Many came to this continent in hopes of finding a place that would respect their faith. So when the opportunity came to construct a government that shared that hope, they used their bitter experiences to build in checks and balances, recognizing that when power was claimed by one, it would be used to deny rights to others. This legislation asserts power that the people of this state did not grant to the legislation. The judiciary is the branch that interprets and applies the Constitution. This amendment, in prescribing how the Constitution is to be construed, usurps the role of the court and subverts the checks and balances that are an essential component of our democracy. Our founders were as suspicious of the misuse of the ballot box as they were of the powerful, so they insulated some functions from the whims of the voters with appointments and confirmations instead of elections. There is nothing deficient in an office obtained by these means. In fact, those public servants who are not elected have the advantage of being able to serve unencumbered by lobbyists and special interests. It is a paltry shadow of democracy whose only principle is let the people vote. Many in this room are okay with this amendment because it gives you what you want. But what happens when the balance of power shifts and a different majority wants to assert that the right to keep and bear arms is not in our state Constitution? What happens when an amendment is proposed that makes your religion vulnerable because it is not mentioned? What happens when the legislature asserts for itself additional powers that we did not intend for it to have? Are we willing to sacrifice our democracy to get what we want? Politics is messy, and the legislature itself is responsible for much of that mess. But please, for the sake of our state's integrity, do not drag our Constitution into the swamp. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, please state your name, what organization you represent, and you may begin.
My name is Jim Lam, and I'm a life advocate for Lutheran Family Service. I'm not a constitutional scholar by any means, but I am curious as to why, after 163 years, the supposed right to kill unborn children suddenly is found in the Iowa Constitution. I would ask Planned Parenthood, why did they take so long to use this serious right? Why, for example, did you not use it with the 20-week ban? Just curious. Another curiosity, why do you suppose that in 1858, six months after the Iowa Constitution was written, spurred on by growing scientific evidence that the unborn were indeed human persons, that the Iowa Legislature passed an act for the punishment of feticide, that is, killing an unborn little boy or girl? Did they forget that they had just granted such a right in the newly approved Constitution? Or could it be that such a right wasn't there and it never has been? I agree with the latter. It never has been, and it's not there now. We've just had those five unelected judges you've been hearing so much about, many polite words telling us that it is. But the fantasy of saying it is there does not and cannot change the reality that it isn't. And I take such verbal engineering personally because it takes away my right to speak up for and defend the most vulnerable of human life through legislation or the vote of the people. Those who oppose this bill, you're good folks, you're smart people, and you think you're doing a good thing. But why take away from me my right to do what I believe is a good thing, defending the life of unborn children? Like this little girl right here, fully 16 weeks old, two-scale model. You know, I've been to some subcommittee hearings, and I listened to the debate on the floor of the Senate, and I kept hearing people saying, "We're here to defend the rights of women and girls in Iowa." Good for them. But I think it's important for us to understand that approximately 30 million little girls, including 150,000 in Iowa, have had their lives snuck out before they were born and will never have the privilege of becoming a woman. Why can't I have the right to speak for them? So, representatives who are here, we'll be voting on this. I know you're smart people, or you wouldn't be here. I know you have good hearts because you're living in Iowa. So I'm asking you not to listen to me. I'm asking you to listen to your hearts.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, please state your name, what organization you represent, and you may begin.
I'm Laura Hesberg with the Iowa Coalition Against Domestic Violence. We represent 21 agencies providing direct services to victims of domestic and sexual violence in every Iowa county. We urge you to reject this proposal. Reproductive health services are the central component of routine medical care for all women, and victims of domestic and sexual violence have an acute need for timely access to the full range of reproductive health services, including abortion care. The link between intimate partner violence and negative reproductive health consequences is profound. Restricting and ultimately prohibiting access to abortion is harmful to women's health, and it will not stop women from needing or obtaining an abortion. These policies have a far greater impact on the safety of health services that women receive than whether women choose to terminate a pregnancy. And for victims of violence, this bill negatively impacts their options for safety more broadly. Reproductive coercion is an element of domestic violence that occurs when a male partner uses intimidation, threats, or violence to impose his intentions upon a woman's reproductive autonomy. This includes rape, sabotaging contraception, and coercing a woman to become pregnant against her will. Iowa Domestic Violence Victim Service providers confirmed that overcoming barriers to accessing abortion care increases a survivor's risk for harm. Without access to abortion care, many women return to abusive relationships they would otherwise leave and carry unintended pregnancies to term at great risk to themselves and to their children. Unintended pregnancy is the primary reason women seek abortion care. It also doubles the risk for domestic abuse during pregnancy, and regardless of the prevalence of domestic violence in the home, homicide by a partner is the number-one cause of death for pregnant women. Safety is not the antidote to domestic violence. Self-determination is. Our end goal, the goal of our service providers, is not only for individuals to reach safety, it is for individuals to have the ability to determine their own futures and have access to the services that make this possible. Erecting barriers to reproductive healthcare for all women functions exactly like reproductive health coercion. And for survivors of domestic violence, it also makes their lives a lot more dangerous. This proposal is harmful to women's health and does not reflect the reality of women's lives. Please reject it.
Thank you. Please state your name, what organization you represent, and you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Sonny. I'm with the Family Leader. I have some remarks here from Martin Cannon. He's an Iowa lawyer with the Thomas More Society. Martin represented the state of Iowa in the heartbeat case. He saw firsthand the overreach by five unelected judges on the Iowa Supreme Court in the 72-hour case, and he's unable to be here today due to a medical emergency, but with your indulgence, I'll read some of his remarks. Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, I urge you to support the proposed amendment. Contrary to what we often hear from opponents of the amendment, and as everyone in this room knows, our rights do not come from the Constitution. and as everyone in this room knows, our rights do not come from the Constitution. Rather, the Constitution protects rights that exist independently of it. Despite its efforts to do so, the Iowa court could not create a previously unknown right to abortion by merely insisting on its existence and writing it into the document. Nonetheless, the court's action needs to be addressed. Throughout our history, the definition of homicide in all its forms, the prohibition of it, and the provision of exceptions have been the proper subject of debate and legislation by elected representatives directly accountable to the people. But the court here improperly weighed arguments of fact that aren't the purview of an appellate court, then asserted a right to abortion simply because it wanted it there. That effort was illegitimate and unlawful. Reading the opinion, a person can fairly wonder what constraints upon its power the majority would ever recognize. The court's abuse of our constitutional structure cannot be ignored. As the authors of their Constitution, the people of Iowa have ultimate authority superior to any branch of Iowa government. When the judicial branch exceeds its authority and distorts the Constitution, it is the right and the duty of the people to correct it. They need not wait and merely hope for the court to correct itself. Even a newly constituted court will be hard-pressed to do so, and the people have the power to act promptly. The amendment in question does not ban abortion. It merely retrieves the power of the people to debate the matter and pass laws accordingly. This reminds the court of its proper role and restores freedom for all Iowans. No one should be afraid of it. Can it really be imagined that protection of a plainly living, plainly human, plainly innocent child is beyond the hope of our legislature? I trust you agree that it should not be. Please support the amendment. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, what organization you represent. Make sure you got the microphone and you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Erin Davison-Ribby, and I'm the Iowa Executive Director of Planned Parenthood North Central States and Planned Parenthood Advocates of Iowa, and we oppose HJR 2004. This proposed constitutional amendment would strip Iowans of their right to abortion, taking away our rights under the Iowa Constitution for the first time in state history. Let's be clear on the intent of this constitutional amendment. It is a poorly veiled attempt by Republican lawmakers to ban safe legal abortion in Iowa, taking our state back decades in time. It comes at the cost of the rights and fundamental freedoms of the constituents they serve, who have historically been able to make private medical decisions in consultation with their doctor. But now politicians here in Des Moines, very few of whom who have medical expertise, want the right to make those personal decisions for their constituents. And as you may hear later tonight, individuals from outside of Iowa who know little about our state and the people who live here are providing the rationale for why Iowans apparently aren't capable of making their own medical decisions. This push to amend the state's constitution was sparked by a court decision last year that struck down a six-week abortion ban. A mere two days after the court blocked this attempt to outlaw abortion in Iowa, legislators introduced a constitutional amendment banning the right to abortion. They were publicly quoted at the time, saying there was nothing hidden about their agenda. They would do whatever it takes to end abortion access in Iowa. And we have seen lawmakers make good on that promise this session, as they have advanced an unprecedented number of anti-abortion bills. In fact, since 2011, the lawmakers pushing this amendment that would give them the power to restrict abortion have introduced more than seventy bills aimed at reducing Iowans' access to safe legal abortion and reproductive health care, including outright abortion bans. Beginning in 2011, these politicians tried to ban abortion in almost all cases every single year until 2018, when they finally succeeded in their efforts. We've seen this narrative play out in other states, where anti-abortion lawmakers sold voters on similar constitutional amendments, saying it was simply a way to restore the power to the legislature. Let's take Tennessee, for example, which amended its constitution in 2014. Since then, the Tennessee legislature has passed seven laws aimed at closing abortion clinics, and most recently, the governor announced a six-week abortion ban. Iowa's constitution has very strong privacy protections that ensure our right to personal freedom, and that includes the right to make private healthcare decisions without interference from politicians. Iowans will not stand for the politicization of their health care and lawmakers who want to take away their rights. The strongest way we can ensure access to safe legal abortion in Iowa is to have it protected by our state constitution.
Thank you. I'm sorry your time has expired. Thank you. Next up, please state your name. Make sure you turn your microphone on. What organization you represent, and you may begin.
Good evening. My name is Danny Carroll with the Family Leader and a former member of this committee. I'd like to read the following letter from John Eitmore, Professor of Constitutional Law and Related Studies for Old Brook College of Law and Constitutional Policy. John is a graduate of the University of Iowa and a native of Woodbury County. He says, "Because each state's Supreme Court is the final interpreter of its state constitution, the 2018 Planned Parenthood v. Reynolds decision cannot be appealed to a higher court. The appropriate remedy is to amend the Iowa constitution to clarify the provisions the court wrongly interpreted." The majority in Planned Parenthood v. Reynolds quotes from the debates of the Constitutional Convention in the state of Iowa that "those who undervalue the role of the judiciary lose sight of the still greater blessing when the legislature denies to the humblest individual the protection which the judiciary may throw as a shield around her. But the protection of individual rights and liberties is the responsibility of all three branches of government, and the legislature has a duty to protect human rights when the judiciary fails to do so. I believe the Iowa Supreme Court has denied to the humblest individual the most basic right to life, and it is therefore the duty of this legislature to provide her the protection which the judiciary has failed to throw around her as a shield. I agree with Justice Mannfield's dissenting opinion that the framers of the Iowa Constitution never intended it to guarantee a right to abortion. That would fly in the face of the direction of medical progress and legal thought in the mid-1800s. Medical science in the 1800s came increasingly to the conclusion that human life begins at conception. In 1859, the American Medical Association concluded that the human being in utero is a person and called for her protection, condemned the unnecessary and unjustified destruction of human life both before and after quickening, and called upon state legislators to reform their abortion statutes. Medical discoveries since that time have confirmed and intensified the conclusion that the unborn child is a living person. Legal reform developed in tandem with this. By 1868, nearly every state had adopted laws prohibiting abortion. Iowa's abortion statute of 1858 provided for punishment of feticide. The 1858 legislature would not likely have passed this act if they thought it violated the Constitution they had adopted only six months earlier. By adopting this amendment, the Iowa legislature can recover for itself and for the people of Iowa the power which the Iowa Supreme Court wrongly took away from them, the power of the people to establish abortion laws for their state. I urge your yes vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Now, please go ahead and turn your mic, state your name, and you represent. You may begin.
My name is Polly Dennison, and I'm here for Catholics for Choice. I'm from Vancon, Iowa, and I am here to say that Catholics can, in good conscience, support access to abortion and affirm that abortion can be a moral choice. Indeed, many of us do. I'm here today as one of the majority of Catholics in Iowa and across the country who stand with Catholics for Choice. I'm here to represent those voices and to speak in deep opposition to HJR 2004. The measures proposed in this bill are a violation of many of the core principles that my Catholic faith teaches. Iowa is home to more than four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand Catholics, making up fifteen percent of the state's population. It's home to a whopping fifteen Catholic healthcare facilities and nearly four-hundred parishes. Decades of polling tells us that a solid majority of Catholics believe that abortion should be legal in the United States, and six in ten Catholics believe that abortion can be a moral choice. And Catholics in Iowa agree. Last winter, I started to reclaim my faith. I was raised a Catholic, but I struggled a great deal with many of the church higher priest positions on things like abortion, women's equality, and marriage. This last fall, I found a group called Catholics for Choice. I learned that I am a good Catholic because I question these positions and because I follow my conscience, because I follow my conscience even when it takes me to a contrary view. Our church has taught us that we are obligated to follow our conscience and make moral and ethical decisions based on our own judgment. It's refreshing and enlightening. I am pro-choice because of my Catholic faith, not in spite of it. The two are not in conflict. The members of the committee should have received a letter from Catholics for Choice Acting President Sarah Hutchinson-Rafford. The letter was sent in February. Emphasizing how important the idea of conscience is to Catholics like me. The catechism states that a human being must always obey the certain judgment of his own conscience. It is both a gift and a responsibility that we are called to always follow our conscience above all else and to respect the rights of others to do the same. Please appreciate the breadth of the Catholic opinion on these issues, and don't be deceived by the Iowa Catholic Conference, their conservative allies, and the anti-choice interest groups who claim to speak for all Iowans. Be assured, Catholics like me support the full range of reproductive health services. I urge you to reject HJR 2004 as a sign of your commitment to the moral autonomy of Iowans like me. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and turn your mic, state your name, who you represent. You may begin.
My name is Caitlin Dixon. I'm a Pella Native and the Executive Director of Iowa Right to Life. I am proud to be with many in the pro-life movement to voice our support of the Protect Life Amendment. I proudly join the call that we need an amendment to the Iowa Constitution that simply says Iowa does not recognize, nor does it secure, the right to an abortion or require the public funding of it. Let's be clear, this is not an abortion ban. To the women listening to the comments undecided to support or oppose the Protect Life Amendment, undecided on what is a right and what is taking the life of an innocent child, do not be scared by the pro-abortion propaganda. There is no ban on abortion with this amendment. This amendment simply allows laws designed to protect to be enacted and stops the judicial branch from stopping down safety and security measures when you walk into an abortion clinic. This amendment puts the power back in the people through their representatives. This amendment, though faced with opposition today, could and should be on the ballot at a future date, where even those that oppose it, those that are the most against it, can have the chance themselves to vote on its passage. This amendment is what Iowans need. A voice not only for themselves but for the preborn, an opportunity to amend our constitution and to put the power back in our elected legislators' hands to create our laws. Iowa deserves to have laws that can change and evolve to reflect the thoughts of Iowans. We have seen that the climate today is pro-life. This is evident in the bills that have made their way to the governor's desk where they were signed into law. It took an act of blatant judicial overreach to completely overturn the seventy-two-hour provision within the twenty-week bill, which then led directly to the overturning of the heartbeat bill, going against what Iowans wanted. There will be those that argue that this amendment will be interfering with women's rights and is an assault to reproductive choice. Far too often, this means advancing an ideology that without the ability to access abortion, women cannot succeed. However, as a twenty-two-year-old mom that after immense pressure found herself on the table at Planned Parenthood and later walked out with her baby, I say proudly and I say boldly that abortion is not health care, that women's rights begin in the womb, and that being pro-life is also being pro-science, pro-woman, and pro-baby. I urge you to pass this amendment so that Iowans can have a choice. Again, so that Iowans can have a choice. They can go to their polling booth and declare that the state constitution is not subject to unelected judges deciding the law, and so that Iowans can serve as the most vital check in our system of checks and balances. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and state your name, what organization you represent. You may begin.
Yes, my name is Laura Lemick, and I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Restore by Grace, an organization formed to offer hope and healing to women, men, and families struggling to navigate the murky waters of life following an abortion. When I was sixteen, I found myself pregnant, and I made the hasty decision to have an abortion out of fear of anyone knowing. Upon arriving at the clinic, I was given no information about the surgical abortion procedure. In a follow-up appointment for the abortion, they informed me they had not completely removed the baby and told me I would need to return for another procedure. Before the second procedure occurred, I passed the remains of my baby in a toilet. We know within these clinics, they have a place where they sort through the remains of a child to make sure all the pieces are there. On this day, they sent away a sixteen-year-old girl with an incomplete abortion, and they knew her parents had no knowledge of the abortion appointment. I was traumatized not only by the procedure, but by the sight of what was left of my child. My story as one of many is heartbreaking to sit with a woman who is carrying the pain of aborting the only child or children she will ever conceive as a result of the poor quality of care she received during and after her abortion. It's awful to hear the young woman share the horrors of RU-486, also referred to as webcam abortions. Men and women have spent years trying their hardest to forget their abortions ever happened. It is said that guilt is to the conscience what pain is to the body. And I can tell you that keeping the feelings of guilt along with the memories at bay is similar to trying to hold a beach ball underwater. It's emotionally exhausting. Today, I deeply regret my abortion, and I'm not afraid to share the truth that abortion ends a life and leaves another wounded. Not only did I lose my first child to abortion, but grandchildren. As this child would be thirty-five years old today, my family tree is forever changed. Women, especially, their unborn children deserve better. All children deserve a right to life, and women deserve to know the facts about abortion rather than the deceptive pro-abortion rhetoric that treats killing an innocent human life as normal. My story is the reason Iowa needs reasonable abortion restrictions to protect women like me and the women I work with every day. We can't allow five men in black robes to silence women like me and turn Iowa into the Wild West of unrestricted abortion. We need the Protect Life Amendment to give us our voice back. We ask you to take the appropriate action to ensure the women and children of this great state of Iowa are protected from this judicial overreach and lousy medical health care provided by abortion clinics. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and turn your mic, state your name, who you represent. You may begin.
Daniel Zino, Policy Advocate, Director of ACLU of Iowa. We oppose HJR 2004. The decision about whether to become a parent is one of the most important decisions we will ever make. Living a safe and healthy life is a basic right, as is the freedom to define our own path. We aren't truly free if we can't make our own decisions about our own lives and our future, whether that's saying no to an unwanted sexual advance, no to an unintended pregnancy, or yes to becoming a parent. We all have strong, sometimes complex feelings about pregnancy, and we've seen that tonight here in this public hearing. We can't know the reason, all of the reasons someone chooses to end a pregnancy. We aren't in their shoes. And yet, even as we hold and sometimes grapple with our feelings and beliefs, we can agree that the decision must always remain with the person in consultation with the people they trust and not with politicians. The right to abortion is a constitutional right. It's protected under the state constitution and under the federal constitution. And what this bill does is intends to take away a fundamental right under the Iowa constitution. Of course, it wouldn't do that right away, since that right is protected under the federal constitution. But as we all know, this is part of a bigger effort in Iowa and across the country to eventually ban all abortions. In fact, in 2018, when the Iowa legislature passed the six-week abortion ban, it did so fully expecting that the bill would make its way to the U.S. Supreme Court and overturn Roe v. Wade. As we know, that didn't happen. What did happen was that in June 2018, in Planned Parenthood versus Iowa, the Iowa Supreme Court, the constitutional head of the separate yet equal branch of Iowa's government, the branch of government that the Constitution vests with the ultimate authority and obligation to ensure no law passed by the legislature impermissively invades an interest protected by the Constitution, that court recognized that pregnant people have equal footing under the law and held that there is a fundamental right to abortion under the Iowa constitution. The court wrote, "At stake in this case is the right to shape for oneself without unwarranted governmental intrusion one's own identity, destiny, and place in the world. Nothing could be more fundamental to the notion of liberty." Instead of recognizing this intrinsic link between equality and freedom and the ability to make a decision about oneself's life, this bill takes away a fundamental right under the Iowa constitution. Even though the anti-abortion movement keeps trying to ban abortions, punish women, jail doctors, and is part of a national concerted effort to ultimately end the legal right to abortion, abortion is legal in all fifty states, and we intend to continue fighting to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state- Please state your name, what organization you represent. You may begin.
I'm Lena Stoltenberg, and I with Operation Outcry. Beside me are thousands of declarations. Each page represents one woman's story of how she's been hurt by abortion. Some were raped by their perpetrator, and they were forced to abort to cover up that crime. Some were forced to abort by a parent, a boyfriend, a trafficker when they really wanted their child. Many agonize inside with shame, masking their pain with drugs, alcohol, and eating disorders, suffering with infertility, inability to bond with future children, miscarriages, abusive relationships, suicide attempts, and dreams that are destroyed. I know because I am one of these women. As a teenager at the abortion facility, I was told it wasn't a baby. It was just a blob of tissue. I was told that it would be easy and safer than if I carried a term. I was the kid dating the medical professionals, so I believed them. I waited on a cold table for a doctor I had never met and would never see again to perform this surgical procedure. On the way home, I was in extreme pain, and I was bleeding profusely. I called the clinic. They said, "I'm sorry, but you are not our problem anymore. You're gonna have to call your doctor." That's how I care. I didn't want my parents to find out what I had done, so I waited to die that night. The bleeding stopped, but my life changed. I was depressed, filled with guilt and shame. I hated myself, so to numb that pain, I started drinking heavily, doing drugs, and became very promiscuous. And that lifestyle led to two more abortions. It's common for women who have had abortions to repeat them. They're subconsciously trying to replace the loss that they're grieving because we're telling them it wasn't a baby. When I got married and wanted a family, we were unable to because of the damage the abortions did to my tubes and uterus. More medical problems led to a mandatory hysterectomy. I killed the only children I would ever fear. Women deserve a better solution than to kill their children. Abortion is not safe. A child dies, and a woman may be wounded physically, emotionally, and psychologically for life. There is no constitutional right to kill children in our state. So on behalf of all of these women, be it the unborn babies that we aborted and myself, I would ask you don't allow the courts or the abortion industry to silence our voices once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, uh, thank you. Turn your microphone. State your name, what organization you represent. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Ruby Bodiker. Thank you for allowing me to speak today against House Joint Resolution 2004. I live in rural Benton County. I am a mother for a practicing Lutheran and a person who values her fundamental human right to bodily autonomy. On Good Friday, March 21, 2008, I found myself lying on an ultrasound table, a wand running across my more than 20 weeks pregnant belly. I was pregnant for the third time, a pregnancy my husband and I very much wanted, but the pregnancy was ending. I started bleeding the night before, and the tech was having trouble locating a heartbeat. I was spiking a high fever. My mother was with me because my husband was away at school for his union apprenticeship. We both knew the on-call OBGYN that night. He attended the same Lutheran church, Missouri Synod, as my mother. We also knew in principle he was against abortion, but first and foremost, he was a physician, retired Army. He made clear I was ill, the pregnancy was affecting my health, and recommended I abort. He was kind, he was clear-eyed, he was my doctor. I chose to abort a pregnancy of more than 20 weeks. I could have chosen to wait and see as a nurse suggested, but with my fever spiking, waiting was not the best option for me. On Good Friday, near midnight, I walked out of the hospital, holding my mother's hand as snow gently fell around us, collecting on the trees. I remember thinking how beautiful the world was in spite of everything, and I never felt closer to God. I still carry the dream from 2008 with me inside this box, the dreams my family lost, the pain I still feel today, a wound that has now been ripped open once again because of the actions of this legislature. The choice I made on Good Friday, 2008, was a choice that was mine to make, and I would make it again in a heartbeat. I ask that all members of the House, including my own male representative, vote against this overreaching constitutional amendment. It is not your job to take away Iowans' rights. As a woman of Lutheran faith, I know angels still sing for me. I know I did nothing wrong. I accessed healthcare, and I made a decision. If you want to protect mothers as is stated in this joint resolution, you might start by actually listening to them, all of them, and that includes me. We live here, too. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next up, please state your name, what organization you represent. You may begin.
My name is Serena Dai, and I represent Operation Outcry. I was the tender age of 15 when I became pregnant and was extremely scared to tell my parents. Unfortunately, I experienced a side of them I had never seen before. After a week of immense abuse, threats, and pressure, I gave in and agreed to go have an abortion. At an Iowa abortion facility, I was taken to a room and given an ultrasound where I saw my baby on the monitor. I looked at the nurse and told her that I couldn't do it. I just couldn't have an abortion. So I was escorted back out to my parents who took me home. A week later, I ended up at a different clinic where they didn't perform an ultrasound, but instead, I met with a counselor who told me that what I saw on that screen wasn't even a baby. It was more like an alien at my stage of pregnancy. She made sure that I wasn't being forced into the abortion, and I said no, even though I was. I was taken back to a room where a nurse held my hand, and they strapped me down to a bed. The abortion doctor came in and didn't look at me or speak to me. He just performed the abortion and left. I heard when my baby was sucked into that vacuum-like machine. I went home where I bled heavily, huge clots that scared me, and I just felt so numb and extremely guilty. From that point on, I became different. I lost a ton of weight and became very emotionally unstable. My parents couldn't help me to recover from the loss I experienced because they didn't know how to. I carried the weight of my abortion into my next pregnancy as a young adult, which was high-risk. I had an incompetent cervix due to the abortion, so I spent most of my pregnancy in and out of the hospital with threatened miscarriage, preterm labor, and finally on bedrest. I had my baby at the end of my eighth-month gestation. After my daughter was born, I began to get some healing simply by being a mother, but the pain, shame, and guilt never left, along with other feelings of depression, inadequacy, and insecurity. You see, not only had abortion ended a pregnancy, but I lost a child, it hurt me, my body, and my future pregnancies. No one at either clinic informed me or my parents that having an abortion could complicate my future pregnancies, but it most certainly did. There were no other options offered to me and no resources given to process through the hurt and pain. I can honestly say that I regret having an abortion and know that it is extremely unsafe for a woman in more ways than one. A woman's health should be treated as a whole.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you. Please state your name, what organization you represent. Make sure your microphone's on. You may begin.
Good evening. My name is the Reverend Catherine West, and I'm here this evening to speak against HJR 2004. I live and pastor a congregation in Belle Plaine and was previously a hospital chaplain for several years prior to that. In both of these ministry settings, I have walked with many individuals and their families as they made a difficult decision about abortion. In my professional ministerial experience, let me assure this body that none of these decisions were ever made without much thought, prayer, and soul-searching. These decisions are made in consultation with medical professionals, each person's personal life circumstances, and their own higher power. As the God-representative in these most vulnerable times and places in an individual's life, I have yet to hear God speak and say that this was morally wrong or a sin. Instead, I have heard God call me to share love, compassion, and support, what I find written in all major sacred texts. HJR 2004 is an assault on women, their freedom and their God-given rights. In my educational process to ordination, I was taught to always consider the historical context. It has been historically proven that making abortion illegal does not prevent or end abortion. It just moves it to the shadows and leads to dangerous and deadly outcomes for women. From a historical faith perspective, Christianity believes that scripture, tradition, experience, and reason should all be used when making decisions. So I look back to the Jewish tradition that believes that life begins when breath enters one's lungs. This belief has been held for centuries and carries over into the Christian tradition today. Christian scripture upholds this belief as well through the telling of several stories of creation. It is unreasonable to amend the state's constitution to bend the law that benefits or considers only a few, when the reasonable thing to do would be to say that if you don't believe in abortion, then simply do not have one. Experience teaches us that the few forcing beliefs and practices on the many does not make them any more just or right, as we have seen with the oppression of so many groups in this country's history. I urge you and beg of you to reject this amendment that treats women as less than others, as individuals who are unable to make decisions for their own bodies and lives. And I urge you to show compassion and love, topics that are spoken about far more in all sacred texts.
Thank you. Your time is expired. Thank you. Please state your name, what organization you represent, and you may begin.
My name is Nancy Lincoln. I'm with Operation Outcry. I am from DeWitt, Iowa, and I'm here to support the pro-life amendment to protect women from the deceitful abortion industry, which is literally destroying the lives and children in Iowa. When I was only 19, I got pregnant. I was single, alone, and scared. I went to Planned Parenthood for help. The nurse said I was nine weeks pregnant. She told me that this was nothing more than a blob of tissue and that an abortion would be a quick and easy solution to this burden and problem. She didn't tell me any other options but abortion. I never received medical information about this blind medical procedure that would be performed on me. I was never warned of any risks of physical, emotional, mental, or spiritual consequences that could follow. I never met the abortion doctor until he walked into the room. I was never shown fetal development information about a nine-week-old baby. Regrettably, I believed her lies, and I had an abortion, and my life has never been the same. Afterwards, I felt deep regret, guilt, and shame because I knew deep down I had done something evil. A part of my soul had literally been ripped out of my body. For the next 16 years, I was haunted by my abortion secret and used drugs to cope with the unseen burden that I carried. It felt like heavy chains wrapped around my soul as I suffered in silence. I couldn't tell anyone for fear of their judgment and even married my husband without being able to tell him of my pain from my abortion. But then God did a miracle, and I met Jesus Christ, who forgave me of all of my sins and brought me peace for the first time in my life. Years later, I started working at a pregnancy care center and started a grief recovery program for women suffering from past abortion pain. I was given a fetal development brochure and instructed to look up the stage of the development of the fetus, which means young one, when I had my abortion. I expected only to see what the Planned Parenthood nurse had reassured me, and I quote, "It's just a blob of tissue." I opened the brochure and got to day 21, and it read, "The heart begins to beat." What? My heart sunk. What do you mean, "The heart begins to beat"? This is only three weeks old, and my abortion was done at nine weeks. The sense of despair washed over me as I realized I was lied to. This was no blob of tissue. This was my baby, and this is what it looked like. Today, I know the truth.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Go ahead and turn your microphone. State your name, who you represent, and you may begin.
My name is Stacy Jackson, and I'm from Des Moines. I am here today because of the HJR 2004. I am frustrated that constitutional amendment is even being considered. I'm not some activist. I'm not someone you'll see marching or protesting. I'm just someone, I'm just an Iowan who is frustrated that a bunch of elected officials want to take away my right to make my own healthcare decision. Each individual should be making their own healthcare choices. These are personal decisions that should be made by each individual. Until you have walked in that person's shoes, you have no idea what they're going through. In fact, it's each person's right to make their own decision regarding their health. You wouldn't like it if I started making decisions regarding yours, not with your wife's or if I make your child's decision for you. Not even doctors have those rights. It's still let up to the actual individual person to make that choice. Actually, HJR 2004 is just another tactic to ban abortion, and abortion has nothing to do with political parties, religion, race, or gender. Abortion is not an easy decision to make. You've probably heard that a lot today. There is no black or white, wrong or right to it. The HJR 2004 is just another discrimination against certain people. You know, if you're rich, you can afford it. Unfortunately, if you're poor, middle-class, the decision will be made for you. I've heard comments that this amendment is about having the Iowa voters decide. These types of comments make me angry. What other, what other healthcare decisions are up to the Iowa voters? It's my body, my choice, my rights are not up to the voters of Iowa. These are my decisions to make. It's everybody's own personal decision. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your chance to speak on this important issue, and I would encourage all of you to vote no on HJR 2004. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, what organization you represent, and you may begin.
Hello, my name is Eric Worseth. I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Iowa. On June 29, 2018, in the case of Planned Parenthood versus Reynolds, the Iowa Supreme Court struck down a law requiring a 72-hour waiting period before terminating a human life. The Supreme Court seized the opportunity presented in that case to rule the right to kill an unborn child is a fundamental constitutional right under the Iowa Constitution, and any laws regulating that right will be strictly scrutinized. Any regulation must now be narrowly tailored to serve a compelling state interest. With this ruling, the Supreme Court effectively put this legislative body on notice that any law you pass regulating this newly discovered right will be hard-pressed to pass judicial review. So how can the Constitution overturn the laws created by duly-elected representatives of the people of Iowa? The Supreme Court said, "It is the supreme law of the land. This document created in 1857 protects our republican form of government. It is designed to protect the lives and properties of every person in the state of Iowa," unless, of course, you happen to be a person still in the room. The framers of the Constitution did not put the right to end the life of an unborn child in the Constitution. As a matter of fact, six months after ratification of the Iowa Constitution, the Legislature passed a law criminalizing abortion under any circumstances except to preserve the life of the mother. And that law stood for over 100 years and was never changed by we, the people. The framers did not intend nor imply that the Constitution recognized the right to end the life of an unborn child as a fundamental constitutional right. In 2018, however, the Supreme Court argued, "The Constitution is a living instrument that sets broad general principles to meet conditions neither contemplated nor foreseeable at the time of the adoption." at the time of the adoption." The court insisted that the Constitution must be flexible enough to apply to new and changing conditions. Abortion, however, is not new. It is not a changing condition, and it was definitely not unforeseen. It was outlawed six months after the Constitution was ratified. And it has been and always will be the taking of a life of the most innocent and vulnerable among us, the unborn. The Supreme Court nonetheless was able to manufacture a constitutional right to abortion because the Constitution did not explicitly say abortion is not a fundamental right. The court wanted the right, so they invented it. Now, the only way the people can ensure that the supreme law of Iowa is clearly understood in correct the court's ruling is to spell out for them what should have been obvious based on the original language of the Constitution and the laws that followed it. Abortion is not a fundamental right. We, the people of the state of Iowa, must amend the Constitution.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Please state your name, what organization you represent. Make sure you turn on your microphone, and you may begin.
My name is Leah Rianen-Bosch, and I'm here with Planned Parenthood. I was born and raised in Iowa, and I currently live in Norwalk. I grew up in a conservative, Christian-reformed home in Orange City, Iowa, and I'm a person of faith. I needed to have an abortion a few years ago here in Des Moines, and because of my decision, I've been forced to retell my traumatic history of healthcare over and over again in front of various people in this room. I have risked everything to share my story. Our Republican legislators, who have proven themselves to be anti-sexual and reproductive healthcare, have inflicted more pain into my life than I will give them the pleasure of describing, and I still show up to defend my truth. I would not be here without my abortion. Complete strangers now know my most private, humiliating struggles. I'm not referencing my abortion. I'm talking about my suicide attempt, my eating disorder, my debilitating anxiety and depression, and the decade-long recovery that no one in this room knows anything about. It is dehumanizing for me to continue doing this, but I must, as some legislators clearly don't understand how abortion is a medically necessary procedure, as it was for me. I know your intent is to ban abortion, and I will continue fighting this every step of the way. I'm horrified a politician would try to control a pregnant stranger's healthcare decisions. HJR 2004 does not protect Iowans. I am an Iowan. You would have killed me. You do not know the strength of my suicide ideation, and you do not understand my eating disorder. I feared for my life while pregnant, and I would have taken it if you forced that pregnancy on me. What qualifications can you show me that would give you any authority in a decision that affected all of my healthcare struggles? This legislation is dangerous, it's offensive, and it's a total invasion of privacy. Your abortion restrictions have been proven to be unconstitutional, so now your new plan is to change the Constitution. Let it be known that abortion would be the only medical procedure mentioned in our state's Constitution if this amendment is adopted. As a resident of Iowa who required an abortion as part of my healthcare plan, I am deeply opposed to HJR 2004. Please understand there is no law that would have stopped me from terminating my pregnancy, and stop pushing this dangerous, terrifying piece of legislation forward. Please oppose HJR 2004.
Thank you. Please state your name, what organization you represent, and you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Joan Thompson, and I am speaking today on behalf of the Iowa Catholic Conference. In Planned Parenthood at the Heartland versus Reynolds, the Iowa Supreme Court moves far beyond the parameters established by Roe v. Wade. It establishes an essentially unrestricted right to elective abortion through nine months of pregnancy and creates the foundation for its public funding. According to Justice Mansfield in his dissent, "Applying the standard now required by the court will make any abortion restriction very difficult to sustain." The proposed amendment does not remove rights, but restores the Iowa Constitution to neutral on the question of abortion, neither for nor against. It places with the people of the state of Iowa the authority to create the laws that so profoundly affect their future, and ultimately, if they choose, to amend the Constitution to protect abortion or ultimately reject it. The Iowa Catholic bishops have issued a statement. "We support an Iowa constitutional amendment to clarify that a right to abortion is not guaranteed by the state of Iowa Constitution." The Iowa Supreme Court, in a June 2018 decision, struck down the law requiring a waiting period before an abortion is performed. In pursuit of that decision, the court claimed the Iowa Constitution provided for a fundamental right to abortion. Such a claim is groundless. For one hundred and fifteen years, the same state of Iowa Constitution served as the basis for a legislative ban on abortion, except to save the life of a mother. The dignity of the human person is the foundation for our moral vision for society. We recognize that each person is created in the image and likeness of God. Hence, direct attacks on innocent persons are never acceptable. This is a question of the common good. We can help pregnant women in need, the men who are fathers to the children, and families in distress without recourse to the violence of abortion. In closing, the Iowa court decision places state authority into the personal lives and most private decisions of Iowans. Although it is our faith teaching that informs the moral injustice the Iowa court's decision represents, it is science and biology that inform our judgment of prenatal life and the reality of abortion. That presents a powerful combination and the obligation to continue our advocacy for the lives and dignity of all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please turn on your microphone, state your name, who you represent, and you may begin.
My name is Rebecca Olson, and I'm with the Family Leader. I am here today in support of HJR 2004. Today, we hear many arguments for and against abortion, but there is one truth that I cannot argue away, and that is, she's a baby. I have one of seven children. Growing up, there was never a doubt in my mind that during her pregnancies, my mother was carrying a baby. I loved to sit next to her, lay my head on her pregnant belly, talking to my little sibling growing inside of her. I would wait anxiously to see if they would kick back, imagining that my little brother or sister was talking back to me, that they were just as excited to see me as I was then. Never once did I think that they weren't a baby. I remember holding my best friend in my arms. She cried after having witnessed her mother miscarry her younger brother, and never once did it cross our minds that he wasn't a baby. Growing up by the ten of the Iowa caucuses my entire life, when I was finally old enough, I signed up to be a junior delegate at my county convention. That day, my fellow junior delegates and I were told by a member of the community that we did not belong there, that children didn't belong in politics, that we were merely playing, we weren't welcome, wasting our Saturday afternoon. I have spent my life and effort since then working in politics. My friends have called me crazy, laughed at me, disagree with me on many occasions, but my reason for fighting is still the same. She is a baby, and she deserves a voice. In 2018, our Supreme Court ruled that our Constitution grants the right to abortion, a right that in the hundred and sixty-seven years our Constitution has existed, had never been found before. When our judges found the right to an abortion, they effectively paved the way to turn Iowa into New York, opened the door for third trimester abortions up to the day of the baby's birth. And not only that, it paves the way for Iowa taxpayers to foot the bill these heinous acts. These extremist judges have stripped away the very basic protection every mother and child deserve. Iowans don't want to see this happen, and the writers of our Constitution never did either. Not only has the voice of the unborn been taken away, but now our voice has been silenced too. Unelected extremist judges have made a choice for Iowa, a choice that should have been ours to make. I want my voice back. This amendment allows us, we, the people, rather than the unelected judges, to amend our Constitution, and it allows us to protect life from the ways the vast majority of Iowans would protect mothers and children. Give us our voice back. Help us return our constitutional power from the hands of unelected extremist judges back to us, the people of Iowa, where it rightfully belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, who you represent, organization, and you may begin.
All right. Hello. I'm Olivia Samples. I live here in Des Moines. Thank you for giving me time to speak today. I will say I do not find joy in spending my Tuesday night with y'all, but I feel that I must in defense of my human rights. I was raped in college. I had an abortion. It's obviously much more complicated and nuanced than that, but I'm given three minutes to speak to this room of strangers about the worst moments of my life, and you do not deserve to share my story tonight. I'm mourned on the things that have happened to me. I own my own business as a doula, supporting families through the journey of pregnancy, labor, birth, and postpartum. I believe that pregnant people and the people who support them deserve...the people who care for them should be supported as they bring new life into this world. It's a sacred journey, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to witness it. No one should be forced to carry a pregnancy, have labor, or become a parent before they choose. This bill forces people to carry unwanted pregnancies rather than respecting their human right to enthusiastically choose the glorious experience that pregnancy can and should be. I also work for Statewide Anti-Violence Coalition, advocating for the needs of survivors of violent crime. From my professional and personal lens, I can see that this bill would result in survivors carrying lifelong traumas that are inflicted on them by their elected officials. Six years ago, someone made a choice to deny me my agency and enact violence upon my body. Tonight, you face the same choice. This bill is harmful to survivors of violence and creates barriers to their mental, physical, and overall well-being as they heal from the violence that they've experienced. This bill states that there will be no public funding of abortions. However, in Iowa and across the United States, the Hyde Amendment of 1976 already prevents public funding for abortions. Your inclusion of this statement exposes your fundamental misunderstanding of this legislation and its impact on the people of Iowa. Part of my story includes being denied the use of the Hyde Amendment, although I qualify. Abortion is among one of the most regulated medical procedures, and these regulations already prohibit people from escaping generational poverty, earning degrees, and obtaining wealth. Black women in this country have always endured the burden of reproductive exploitation. Lucy, Anakra, and Betsy were enslaved women who died for our foundation of modern gynecology. This legislation exploits Iowans and forces pregnant folks to succumb to your extremist ideology. The most vulnerable people in our community will once again feel this burden the most. I am not ashamed of the people elected to uphold our rights to liberty, property, safety, and happiness ought to be. Circumventing our Supreme Court to enact your will is shameful. Wasting state resources and time while Iowans are in desperate need of resources for things like education, mental health care, and clean water is shameful. Demanding constituents in the emotional labor of defending their human rights is shameful. We deserve better. We deserve protected access to safe, legal abortions. Please vote no on HJR 2004.
Thank you. Please state your name, who you represent. Make sure you turn on your microphone, and you may begin.
My name is Jennifer Leatherby, and I live in Des Moines. I'm here today because an abortion saved my life. I don't say that lightly, because I know that I could be dead today without access to safe, legal abortion. The fact that extremist legislators would propose and let alone vote yes for an amendment that would put my life at risk is truly dehumanizing. My case is not special. I am one in four. I am one in four people who will choose an abortion in their lifetime. Many people, like myself, who have had abortions, also feel that their lives were saved in some way by having access to this medical procedure. It's a disgrace to the state of Iowa that myself and others like me should have to come here to defend our lives over and over again. HJR 2004 risks the life, liberty, safety, and happiness of Iowans. The text of this amendment states that Iowans shall have, quote, "No right to abortion or required public funding of abortion to defend the dignity of all human life and to protect mothers and unborn children from efforts to expand abortion even to the day of birth." As a person who would be considered mother if this amendment were to pass, I can promise you that losing access to abortion would, without a doubt, put the safety and dignity of my human life at risk. It is no secret that abortion is always safer than childbirth, when considering the life of the pregnant person. This amendment would force Iowans to remain pregnant regardless of any dangerous complications that could risk their life, or in the case of rape or incest. HJR 2004 legalizes forced birth, which is listed as a human rights violation by the United Nations. This amendment, if passed, could cause horrifying bloodshed among Iowans. This would harm Iowa's families, and undoubtedly, children would lose their mothers. Iowans' lives will literally be at risk. My liberty to decide if and when to have a child would be stripped away. My safety would be at risk, and my happiness would be diminished. HJR 2004 was written by a group of religious extremists and has no place in Iowa's Constitution. Please vote no.
Thank you. Please state your name, who you represent, and you may begin.
My name is Drew Zahn, Director of Communication for the Family Leader. I thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of the Protect Life Amendment. Today, we have heard all kinds of arguments about abortion. But let's be honest, we've all heard these arguments before. Yet there is one truth that I can't argue away, because I have seen my children's ultrasounds. I have seen my twin boys in the ultrasound, tussle with one another, climb all over one another, and I could see their individual personalities in the womb, personalities they still have today, sixteen years later. There's one truth I can't argue away, because the science is overwhelmingly clear. There is one truth I can't argue away, and our polling at the Family Leader shows that nearly two-thirds of Iowans agree. That infant life in her mother's womb, she's a baby, and she deserves at least some protection. Yet in 2018, unelected judges in Iowa Supreme Court pushed on Iowa a precedent for eliminating any protections for children or their mothers. We need to talk about how radical this precedent is. This radical ruling lays the foundation for legalizing late-term abortions in Iowa, even in the third trimester, even up to the day of a baby's birth. A similar ruling to what we had here in Iowa was used in Texas and Louisiana to strike down medical safeguards for women that protect vulnerable women considering abortion, which is one of the reasons a Louisiana Democrat is advancing Louisiana's version of the Protect Life Amendment. And Iowa Supreme Court justices Mansfield and Waterman warned that our state's radical ruling could even be used to make Iowans pay for abortions, and the Hyde Amendment at the federal level would do nothing to protect Iowa taxpayers from Iowa medical issues. Iowans don't want that. Less than twenty percent of Americans agree with this extremist abortion agenda being pushed by these judges, and no one, Republican or Democrat, can reasonably argue that the writers of our state constitution intended that. Iowans, if given the chance, would protect women and the children from third trimester abortions, and we can't imagine being forced to pay for abortions. So we, the people of Iowa...
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Please state your name, who you represent, and you may begin.
Hi. My name is Lindsey Mayher. I am just a concerned constituent. Good evening, Representatives. In my opinion, this is an information and a control issue. The now-infamous heartbeat bill was passed in 2018 and overturned the following year due to one judge's opinion of it being unconstitutional. In 2018, voters could have voted out the elected officials who enacted that legislation, and in some cases, some seats did change. However, the majorities in both houses and the governor's house did not go changed. So when we think through voting, the people have spoken, but since the judge knew better than the people, we now need to clarify the Constitution, since the definition of who has a right to life, liberty, and due process was somehow not clear. My question now is, why do some legislators not trust the people of Iowa enough to vote for themselves? At what point do citizen... At what point do citizen legislators and judges know more than the rest of the general public and should make all of the decisions? Some legislators distrust the public with information, because they don't believe they will make the decision they want. Unfortunately, a lot of legislation this session has prevented the public from having more information or true informed consent, with the argument it could be dangerous to others, it is unfavorable to the unelected boards and departments, or it will erect barriers between providers and patients. Iowans, on average, are highly educated. We have the highest high school graduation rate of the nation, and so far, we are still the first in the nation caucus, due to our ability to have open conversations and not be completely bought off by special interests and mass media. We see how you vote on bills and committees, and we know when you are not listening to your constituents on matters that affect our daily lives. We know when you are placating us by just running bills that you put no effort into. If you, our legislators, would inform the people with all of the pertinent information on this issue and allow both sides to present them that information, perhaps even taking time at your legislative forum or in your newsletter to discuss both sides, this would yield a public that is ready to make a truly informed decision on what is best for our state constitution. We would have a society of educated and informed citizens engaged in legislature, which to those in Washington DC may seem extremely dangerous. But thankfully, this is Iowa, where we hopefully welcome engagement and well-informed citizens. Please move this bill forward and allow us, the people, to vote specifically on this matter. After all, both the Iowa Constitution and the US Constitution begin with "we, the people." Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, who you represent, and you may begin.
Good evening. My name is Eric Schultz, and I reject this piece of legislation. I'm sitting here today as a miracle baby who probably should not have been born in the first place. I think we can all agree that what mothers go through in the nine months, that is a tremendous strain on the human body, morning sickness, childbirth, et cetera. Thank God I'm a man, and I don't have to suffer those consequences. All right? However, if my life once again depended on all of that, I do not think that is completely unreasonable for her to refuse service. What is extremely barbaric in society is having a government force a woman to go through that, like a slave master does, force and work. It's indentured servitude that the Fourteenth Amendment should have cleared up. Some people think that abortion is immoral. That is perfectly fine. I'm friends with those people. Others think that is immoral to ban it. Should, in a truly American, limited government style of government, should the government stay out and let people decide for themselves what is moral and what is immoral? Don't take my word for it. Female lawmakers, including Governor Kim Reynolds, oppose heartbeat by a margin of 24 to 13. They oppose this legislation in the Senate, six to five. Gee, I wonder why. OB-GYN organizations and medical organizations such as the University of Iowa oppose these measures. Why is that? The fact that you can't even muster up a majority of women in the State House, and you want the male population of the state of Iowa to have a say in a woman's healthcare choice is pathetic, and the complete opposite of what it means to be pro-woman. Side note, whoever invented the phrase "pro-life is pro-woman" is extremely disillusional. Let me explain why. Only the women bear the brunt of pregnancy for a natural human emotion of love, and when males think they could consent to fifty no's and one yes, abortion evens the playing field for what goes on in the human body. Before I conclude, I just want to say that you can argue back and forth what science does and what science doesn't prove. My stance is that ultimately, it is the woman's body that is up for rent, and she should have the final say. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your names, what organization you represent, and you may begin.
Chuck Hurley, the Family Leader. Mr. Chairman, fellow Iowans, I would like to try to clear up what I think is a misunderstanding that came up in your committee two weeks ago when this bill was brought out. At that time, you, Mr. Chairman, and other supporters were accused of, quote, "fearmongery" in stating that Iowa taxpayers could now be forced to pay for late-term abortions. Yet, is it really fearmongery? When two top legal experts, two Iowa Supreme Court judges, Mansfield and Waterman, warned that the case Planned Parenthood v. Reynolds is a, quote, "stepping stone," unquote, to making Iowans pay for abortions. A part of the bill assured us in your committee that the Hyde Amendment will protect Iowans from paying for abortions, but the Hyde Amendment only protects federal dollars. It does not do anything to protect Iowans from being forced to pay through Iowa taxes. That was simply a false statement. So who really is fooling whom here regarding forcing Iowa taxpayers to pay for late-term abortions? Already, seven states, and I've listed them here, but don't have time to read them out, already seven states allow abortion at any time, for any reason, even up to the day of the baby's birth. Already, eleven states have seen their partial birth abortion bans struck down by courts. And who is fooling whom when the taxpayers in fourteen states have been required to fund elective abortions, and the Hyde Amendment did nothing to stop that? Who's fooling whom when all of the Democrat Party's leading presidential candidates today not only openly support abortion up to the day of a baby's birth, but are publicly announcing their plans to make American taxpayers pay for them? Who's fooling whom when the Democrat Party's national platform calls for taxpayer-funded abortion? Look, the Democratic Party knows these are unpopular positions. Even most Democrats don't support abortion up to the day of a baby's birth, and don't want to force taxpayers to pay for them. Iowans certainly don't either. So we've been offered some false reassurances by certain Iowa legislators, even while this radical abortion agenda marches on across the US and has now come to Iowa. So come on, who's fooling whom? The good news is that even though proponents of this radical abortion agenda were able to get a handful of judges in Iowa to play politics and side with them, the Iowa Constitution provides we, the people, a remedy, a constitutional amendment.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Let me explain, this is our last speaker. There's a few more pros than there are cons, because some folks did not show up, that had signed up to speak, so we're out of speakers. That is why I assume you're pro according to the note I was given. I was asked at the beginning of this, by my staff, are you going to go to eight o'clock or eight oh three, since you spoke for three minutes? And I said at the beginning, fine, we'll go to eight oh three. I had no idea, ladies and gentlemen, that we would have more pros than cons, so please be aware of that. I'm trying to be as fair as I can possibly be. And with that, this will be our last speaker. You have three minutes. Please introduce yourself. Tell us who you represent, and you may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm Nathan Ottman with the Family Leader, and I want to close with a discussion about the two major questions before us today, because there really are two questions. The first question before us today is the one addressed directly by this amendment, and that is the question of who amends the Iowa Constitution, the highest law in our state? And according to the Supreme Court, if you have a majority of judges on our court, you can amend the Iowa Constitution according to the prevailing standards that those judges hold. That is what was stated explicitly in the 2018 ruling. I don't want a Constitution that can be amended by four people. I don't want a Constitution in which I and my elected representatives have no say. So to answer the question of who should amend our Constitution, I say we, the people, not unelected judges, should amend our Constitution, and this amendment will allow us to do that. And then there's a second question before us today, and that is the question of life. The amendment merely provides a playing field where our elected representatives can discuss the very important question of when life begins and when it should be protected. It's an important question that shouldn't be left to the whims of judges, but make no mistake, there is a right answer to this question, and that's because the little one, the little boy, the little girl in the womb is a baby. We can debate everything else here today, but if we put one question on the table and we ask ourselves, is that little boy or that little girl in her mother's womb a baby? And we answer with an affirmative, then how can we do anything but protect that little one? This amendment merely allows our elected representatives to protect that little one. And as you've seen today, there are many Iowans on most sides of this issue. Right now, we're simply asking that there be an open playing field. I, on that open playing field, will advocate for the unborn, because I believe every child deserves a birthday. I believe every little girl in her mother's womb is a baby and deserves to be protected. And I would leave you with a thought today. I want you to think about those two questions. Who should amend our Constitution? And is that little girl in her mother's womb a baby? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. I appreciate you all coming. I appreciate all the national posts on this issue. I appreciate the respectful discourse this evening. I hope you all have a safe trip home. God bless you, and have a good evening.